Meeting will come to order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we're going to ask the finish the calendar year. Isaiah to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded.
Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. Gitchia.
Yeah.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yeah.
Mr. Giggy.
Here.
Mr. O'Hair.
Here.
Mr. Lemay.
Here.
Mr. Bahu, would you be so kind to see if anyone has signed in for a public appearance?
Nobody's out registered to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Any school committee communications? With that, we'll have the report of the student representative, Isaiah Karasquillo.
Organizations and clubs. The sophomore class committee sent out thank you photos to all donors for their recently completed Veterans Brunch. They donated $200 from profits to the Wounded Warrior Project. The junior class had a great time at the Junior Palm on November 22, 2019. Over 200 students attended the event. City of Light float. We are proud to report that our float entry in the City of Light Parade entitled "A Charlie Brown Christmas" won the May's Award for the best of the parade. Thank you to the float supervisor, Pat Coolier, our float's driver, Brad Taylor, and all the students and staff who worked together to make the project a success. A special thank you to everyone's favorite pup, Snoopy, who made a special appearance to take photos with spectators and spread Christmas cheer. The GSA had a great regional leadership meeting in the Artisan Function Room on December 5th. 60 students and their advisors from GSAs all over the Northeast Massachusetts learned about the LGBTQ related issues and how to bring the information back to their local GSA. It was a great event. Skills USA in-house competitions were held during the first two weeks in December. Students with the highest scores will be recognized at our award ceremony in February and have an opportunity to represent our school in the district competition in March. Athletics. Swim and Dive will look to make a splash this season in the CAC as the team opens up with home meet on Friday, December 20. Indoor Track heads into the third season, looking to be one of the top programs in the CAC. The Griffin runners will have their first meet on December 18 at Lynn Tech. The cheer team is already rounding into mid-season form as they look to build off a solid fall campaign. The team will compete in several invitational meets in January and February in hopes of qualifying for D1 regionals. Griffin wrestlers fell just three points shy of a clean sweep of their season opening quad meet on December 14. The Griffin grapplers downed both Drake and conquered Carlisle before falling to Woburn by a slim margin of 42-39. The team will be competing in the prestigious Shriners Tourney on December 21 in preparation for the Lowell Hall Day Tourney next week. Due to weather issues, the Lady Griffin basketball team had to wait for their season opener. A very young but extremely talented squad will look to start strong as they travel to Monte Tech on December 20 for a non-league matchup. Boys hoops came out running against Lynn Tech last Friday night, scoring 71-39 victory over the Tigers. The team will host a tough and talented Chelsea team on Friday, December 20, before preparing for the annual Winter Fest Tourney being held at Lowell Catholic on December 28 and 29. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah.
Merry Christmas.
How's the foot going, Isaiah?
It's going good. Get some luck now.
We have the approval of the minutes for November 21.
Motion. Make the motion.
Motion by Matt Sheen, seconded by George O'Hair.
Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Giggy.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Report of the treasurer, approval of the warrant.
Move the way of the reading.
I'll second that. Seconded by Committeeman Bahu.
Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Giggy.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Motion will approve the expenditures of the sum of $3,471,137.98.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Committeeman Bahu, seconded by Committeeman Moran.
Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Giggy.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Report of the general counsel. I don't believe the general counsel's here this evening. Report of the superintendent-director, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a few items on the agenda. The first item is our monthly Cooperative Education Report. We currently have 192 senior students participating as of November 30. That represents 39% of the class of 2020. That's an increase again, third month in a row over last year, of an increase for our co-op. I do want to mention, as a reference point, case in point, we will be having students work on the upcoming market basket that's being developed down the street locally. I think that's a good selling point for our school, and our kids are going to be working there. Good work, Ms. Bazanzin, again. This has risen every month, and we're getting more and more kids out there. And it's a tougher con... It's a market for people to get jobs, and we're still getting kids out there, so this is really good.
So, Mr. Mastacola, this is about students working at the new market basket, not help build it?
No, help constructing.
Help constructing.
Electrical students. We have some co-op students going to be there working.
Wow, that's great news.
Number two on the agenda. At this time, I'd like to invite interim Superintendent-elect Davis for a recommendation of hire to you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Davis.
So, tonight, I'd like to ask the committee for their support and recommendation of Mr. Michael Barton for the position of interim Assistant Superintendent, Principal Equitable Technical High School. I believe Mike Barton has the knowledge and skills, the commitment and dedication to fulfill this position fully for the next six months. Mike and I have worked together for the last 22 years in several different capacities, and I am fully confident that he can fill this position and do the job and continue to work collaboratively with the staff in this building to close the achievement gaps and meet success for all of our students.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Davis.
That was well said.
Any comments from the committee? Mr. O'Hair.
Should we vote on this to secure this?
Yeah, I'm recommending...
I think it's just a ratification.
Yeah.
Moved by Mr. Moran, seconded. Seconded by Mr. Bahu. Did I see your hand? Yes.
Mr. Sheen.
On my favor.
Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia.
Based on our recommendation, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Giggy.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mike.
Would you like to say anything?
Want to jump into the fire here?
The calls are hot.
I just want to express my appreciation for your support tonight. Particularly, I'd like to express my appreciation for interim Superintendent-elect Ms. Davis. I appreciate all of her guidance over the years. I appreciate her confidence in me, so I appreciate that greatly. I'd also like to express my appreciation to Superintendent Joseph Mastacola for his guidance over the last two and a half years. I've learned a lot from Superintendent Mastacola, and I certainly feel that I can do the job, and I appreciate all of your support this evening. Thank you.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
There's no question Ms. Davis has a lot of respect.
Thank you very much.
To you, and we look forward to working with you.
Likewise.
We just look forward to having the bill and run the way it has been. Reason why it shouldn't, the tenure between the two of yous. I think I speak for most of the board. We feel pretty confident in your ability, and we look forward to working with you, and we're just here to monitor everything. We need information, just like you, to keep us in the loop, and we want to work with you, and thank you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it again. Thank you very much.
Good luck, Mike.
Okay, moving on. Number three on the agenda is a donation approval. We have a donation in the amount of $5,000 from Cummins Properties in Woburn to be used for the volleyball program. One of our parents, David Fertado of Lowell, donated $1,000 and encouraged four other of his coworkers to donate $1,000 also. So, it's a $5,000 donation to the volleyball program. A letter's included in the package. Need a vote on this.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Mr. Moran.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Gitchia.
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias.
Yes.
Mr. Giggy.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda. I'm more than pleased to inform the committee that after multiple years of work by a lot of individuals in the school district, and I know that some of the individuals are here and also on the committee, we were notified by the Air Force recently that we were selected to be a junior ROTC program here at the school.
Nice.
As you know, many of the committee members... This endeavor started years ago to try to get the Air Force here and start this program for our students and the opportunity for them. As you recall, in May of 2018, we had a site visit. Some of you participated in that site visit with the Air Force. We had multiple individuals come to do an assessment of our school district, assessment of our programs, to see if it would be a fit. Budgeting was cut at the Air Force at the end of the summer of 2018, but we were told we're still on the list. We did a lot of work since then, contacting the Air Force, asking them if they needed any other information, expressing our interest, and I do want to acknowledge two individuals in the audience, two of our staff members, Mr. Bladus and Mr. Dion, who helped tremendously in terms of soliciting the Air Force to help us get approval. So, thank you both for your hard work, both of you. Thank you. We have a lot of work to do to get this off the ground. I'm just giving you a quick summary. I anticipate in the next two months, maybe in the February meeting, Ms. Davis or Mr. Barton can give you an update after some planning. We're at the initial stages, but I did want to give you a few FAQs, frequently asked questions, so you can get a handle on where we're going to go with this. One question you may ask is, how many students are going to participate? Initially, for the fall of 2020, somewhere in the range of 20 to 25. It's a small group to start out. In years to come, somewhere down the line, three to four years down the line, that number would be into the hundreds for our school district. So, initially, we're starting small. The next question that may be asked is, what is the financial commitment to the school? Well, initially, over the next three to four months, it's about $15,000 to $20,000 we need to commit. That would be for advertising and paying the instructors that we need to hire sometimes in the range of April or May so they could plan during the summer to be ready for September. So, you know, we will need two instructors. The instructors are paid as a teacher, similar to a teacher, so if you use an $80,000 number, it's two $80,000 salaries. However, the Air Force pays a little over half of that, so the commitment going forward for next school year for two instructors would be about $80,000 for the two instructors. So, they're two teachers. Some of the courses that they teach are aerodynamics, leadership, health and wellness, and strategic planning. So, there will be a commitment by the district for teacher salaries. Again, the Air Force pays a little bit over half of that according to what the rank of the person is. We wouldn't know that yet.
Would that be annually, Mr. Superintendent?
It'd be annually.
It doesn't have a... It doesn't get overused or expire after three years or so?
No, that would be... It would be every year we'd have to pay the teacher salaries, and the Air Force would pay a portion of it. There would be some small supplies in the commitment for the school district for our flags holders, flag holders and such, maybe some storage bins and such. The next question you may ask is space, which was always the question that came up with this program. In the fall, we anticipate that it can be utilized. We can utilize our regular classroom space because we're not going to be having that many courses for the 20 to 30 kids, 25 kids or so, in leadership, aerodynamics, strategic planning and such. But in years to come, we would need to create a space plan here and figure that out in terms of where some of those kids would go during the day for the courses. A big part of what they do is drill. Drill can be anticipated, easy to do in our school district. We have multiple spots to do that. We start this in the fall. The three drill spots would be the lecture hall, on a day like today especially, the auxiliary gym with availability, obviously, we have classes in there, and then when the weather's fine, which is most of the time, we can go out on the basketball court here on the high top, or they can actually go on the field and drill. So, there's multiple places they can drill. I don't think the drill's going to be so much of an issue. The issue is going to be, again, classroom space, like any program, and we're all well aware that it's not only affects this program, but any program that we do and some of the size factors that we have here. So, I would anticipate that in 18 to two years from... 18 months to two years from now, we have to create a space plan to see where those three or four courses would need to be, and I do think, you know, that can happen here. I don't think we need to do any additions or anything like that. I just think we need to use our resources more wisely. This is just a summary going forward in terms of the Air Force. I think this is an incredible game changer for our school. It really is. It's going to change the way a lot of kids think about school. It's going to change a lot of ways kids think about leadership, character, and development. And I do think that the partnership with the Air Force is strong. We do have a sister program at Lowell High School. I think that will be a strength to be able to tap in and do joint exercises together with the Lowell ROTC program. And the other thing, other than Mr. Bladus and Mr. Dion, we also have about 10 to 12 staff members that are military experienced that can advise us and help us with some of the pieces of the program. I'm really proud of this, that we were able to get this. This is a big feather in my cap. I know that finishing this in... I know in February, Ms. Davis and Mr. Barton will give you an update as we start planning over the next month, month and a half going forward. I can entertain a question or any thoughts you may have.
I happen to... Well, I'll save my remarks. You had your hand up, Mr. Bahu.
Yeah, no.
George O'Hair.
Yeah, sure, okay. Now that we got the names straightened out, we're all set. I think it's a great idea, too. When I was on another committee, we brought the Navy... Excuse me, the Air Force into Lowell High School, and since that time, and I'm talking about 30 years now, that the ROTC program has been active, very active at Greater Lowell, at Lowell High School, excuse me. In addition to what you would think of a military person, there's a lot of drills, et cetera, et cetera, that have to be fulfilled to show the discipline of, you know, what you're trying to do, and it worked out fine. I think there were five different superintendents at that time that, because of retirement in the Navy, but it was very difficult. It was very difficult trying to get people into this school also because of numbers, but now that it sounds like it's a deal, a regular deal, this is going to be a great show. With the military, they're going to take different trips all over, which I have. It was excellent, you know? And I think in some cases, kids need this, all right? Just to, you know, show exactly what they do and how it meshes with our programs, too. But I think that's a great, great idea that has come up, and let's hope we can maintain that. Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm curious. I'm hearing that we need two teachers, two advisors, two teachers from the onset, but there's only going to be 20 to 25 students. Why two teachers for 20 to 25 students? Do we have the space for that? Is that sort of part of the mandate to get into the program?
It's part of the mandate to have the two teachers right off the bat. So, initially, even though there's only be 20 to 25, 30, 30, you know, something in that range, they have to do some recruiting. That's a big part of it. So, these two individuals, it's not always prepping for the school year, the storage and such, for the equipment, buying the supplies, but they would have to start recruiting kids and counseling kids. So, I look at that as a plus also, you know? Even though they may not be teaching, you know, a full load per se, they'd be doing counseling and other activities around that. But I think that has to be worked out, too, over the next months, a couple of months or so.
So, this would be two 40-hour-a-week positions?
Two full-time teachers, right, yeah. And again, so you think about an $80,000 salary for a teacher, about. The Air Force pays a little over half. We pay the other half.
And where would they be situated in the building? Sorry, Mr. Giggy.
They'd be... Initially, the thought process, next year, they'd be traveling, so they'd be moving classroom to classroom, right? They wouldn't have a physical spot. They'd be moving.
Committeeman Giggy?
Yeah, just speaking from firsthand experience. I have a niece that's Navy ROTC, got a full-paid scholarship to Emory Riddle from the program, and she started out in high school. She's been very successful. It's a good thing for the kids to have available to them, and maybe one of the marketing tools can be orienteering, get the kids interested in trying to find their way around campus and get the student body excited about this, and maybe you can get more than 30 students right off the bat by setting up some sort of programs right here in the school with the other students and the teacher participation, and that will help.
I happened to be here when Colonel Steve Sanders was here. He was... We were just finishing up the renovations with the school, and he was very impressed with the whole building, let alone the staff. I was just wondering, is this going to be week to week, or is it like co-op?
No, it's week to week. The course is a regular course. If a student takes a, you know, a science class, they'd be taking aerodynamics. It'd be a regular course, regular part of our course of study.
So, they'll be... I know they're like a separate entity, but they'll be working hand in hand with the school, right?
Yeah, the staff members would be on site. They'd be part of our staff, the Air Force. The instructors are usually retired, 20-year retirees of the Air Force, so the instructors are probably a little older in age in terms of experience.
My thought process, and I'd like to include Ms. Davis, if there's any way via a possible grant or something that might assist us with either the staff, the two teachers, as much as they're paying half, if we could recoup something, if there's some means, ways and means of that, that'd be good, too.
Thank you.
We do have a grant writer, so it'd be good to look into that.
Thank you.
Yes, George, Tatsias.
If we're going to start off with about 20, 25 kids, you said it could be up over 100. We'll have to hire additionals. No?
Two teachers will be two teachers. Two teachers can handle it. In my past district, in the past where I worked, I had two teachers with about 500 kids in the program.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow. That's good. Committeeman Moran?
Well, my question is, the two teachers, what else do they do all day long? Are they teaching courses, five courses a day, or...
When things get moving in the 18 months to two years from now, yes, it'll be a full load. So, a teacher may teach two classes of leadership, two classes of aerodynamics, one class of wellness, one class of strategic planning, and then drill. And they may have two classes of drill, or three classes of drill, two aerodynamics, and so it'd be a full load.
So, does this student or students have... That's part of their course schedule?
Part of their course schedule.
Part of their course schedule.
Yeah, that's...
So, they're not just assigned to those people all day?
No, they would go... It's, you know, instead of going to... I'm just making this up. Environmental AP class, they'd go to aerodynamics. It'd take the place of something else in terms of what they... Their program, if they're in the ROTC program.
I'm concerned, like, what does the teacher do all day long? So, you have 20 students teaching aerodynamics, and then what happens in the next 15 minutes or the next 45 minutes?
Well, the first year was going to be, as we mentioned, is going to be to get off the ground, but we anticipate to have the hundreds of students. They'd have a full schedule. The two teachers have a full schedule. And drill sometimes is a double period, I believe. It'll be double with time when they do drill.
This is always been a sought-after thing by schools throughout the state of Massachusetts nationally, correct?
It's a competitive program nationally. We should be proud of the fact that we got selected.
That's a fact of our capital.
It's going to be an incredible recruiting tool, not that we need to recruit that much because, as you know, people are banging down the doors to come here. But there are kids who have asked, you know? I've talked to Ms. Martinez about it. There are kids who have asked and want to know if we have the program, and I think that's a selling point for a lot of kids. But after it gets running, you anticipate three to four years from now, you know, when the program's running and running well, people know that, similar to what they want to come here for one of the programs in vocational education, especially on medical and health and medical. Kids come here because we have an outstanding reputation in the health and medical area. So, I do think that will take the place of that, too.
And how many of our students that graduate go into the military? Because this is probably going to be almost like a feeder program into the military.
I don't have the exact military. I don't have it, but there's a few... There's a lot. There's a few that do that. Of course, we have, you know, there's recruiting that comes here. The Air Force is one of the bridges that does that.
Probably 10 to 15.
10 to 15.
I was going to say that. When you go to graduation, you see 10 to 12 anyways.
You see them wearing their...
Right, right.
Well, it sounds to me like it's... How many vocational schools in the state of Massachusetts have it? Do we know?
I don't. I do know that, I think Great New Bedford has a program because they were talking about that in place. But, you know, again, as I mentioned, I think the partnership with Lowell High, I think is imperative. I think that would be a good partnership for us to do joint exercises together, you know? And of course, you know, we have activities here. You know, one of the things I was able to utilize in the past with my ROTC is we have, you know, events and, you know, Veterans Day events, which we have here, which is a very popular event. It's a mission-critical event in the school. And other events, and Mr. Giggy had mentioned the orientating. And other events, and, and Mr. Giggie had mentioned the orientating, we usually use Skills USA kids, but it's also good to have those kids involved because that's part of the curriculum, too, the leadership curriculum to be forward.
Do we have to meet any requirements after the fact, two years, three years, have to have so many students within the program in order for it to stay?
Not necessarily. I think the key thing that will, will be the issue for us, sustainability, and the thing you have to worry about is funding, cut funding from the federal level. And you know what? That's the same with almost any program that's there. I think that's the big, that's the, really the only thing we have to worry about. If there's a, a major economic downturn, and then federal, the federal government would cut funding, that may be something. But they would also cut funding for other education entities, too. So I think that's the thing to think about, and when that time comes, and if it comes, I think there needs to be some planning by the administration in terms of, you know, what's sacred, what's not, similar to anything. You know, we haven't been in that stage in school, Massachusetts schools for the past 10 years, where we'd have to think like that. You have to pit programs against each other. That's great, we don't have to do that. But I remember 10 years ago, that's what we were doing, right? We were looking at programs, you know, and such, but good questions, good things.
Just one last question, if I could.
Yes, Judge.
Yeah, just, I went through this a couple of times. One was in the Lowell school system, when I was on the Lowell School Committee, a major, a fellow by the name of Major Ham, he was the first person that came, Lowell, anybody else that I knew did not exist in Lowell at that time. But they did everything. They were writing, they, there was a lot of academic work that they had to do. We think of rifles and dress, dress, but these people were flying in airplanes that were coming out of New Hampshire. And they were, kids were going in, out there, lying in the, most of these were C-45s, 345s, I guess it was. And they were lying on their bellies, just watching a jet coming right at you because that's the way they were refueling and go, you know? But I think there's a lot of, that was a very successful, a very successful program. And since that time, they've had a number of, a number of people that, what'd you think of that? Pretty good?
That's awesome, Judge.
Yeah, good, I'm glad you, but anyway, that, it was worth its while. We, I think we sent, no, we, we didn't, I'm not too sure if we sent someone from here, but I know we had a lot of people that was in the Air Force that we, a couple of people were, I, I think it was someone from here because there was a couple of us that went two weeks with the training program, and it was, it was excellent. Something, even if the student isn't enhanced by this, he's so, he saw something that you'd never see again in your life. It's worth it.
Do we need to vote on this, or is this?
It's minor.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to vote on this, or is this just?
It'd be nice to take a symbolic, symbolic vote if you wanted to.
If you can vote on it, it's not on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's the report, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
I'll tell you, it's fantastic.
Report of a business manager?
Happy Christmas.
You came all the way here for that? Thank you very much.
He's gay for the eats, weekend.
Does anybody have anything on the old business?
Yeah.
Pertaining to the interim superintendent's director's contract, we need a motion to ratify the vote taken in executive session at the November 21st, 2019 meeting to approve the contract for the interim, interim superintendent-director Jill Davis. I entertain that motion.
All said.
By Mr. Tassius, seconded by Mr. O'Hair.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes. I'm also, as the chair, we had discussed before, we're going to have the, the search committee for the permanent superintendent-director. So I have spoken to individuals. The committee will consist of Kempden Giggie as chair, Paul Moran, Judge Tassius, and Fred Bahu.
I think anybody else can also attend any of the...
They can attend, but...
They can't participate.
They can't participate.
Well, hold on now, they cannot participate? They don't have a vote, is that correct? They can, they can be heard?
It would have to be open if there's more than four.
Right, so they can be heard, they just cannot vote.
If there's more than four committee members present, then it has to be open session, it cannot go into executive session, that's the problem.
I've spoken to legal counsel pertaining to that, that's, that's the gist of it. I mean, as, they can't vote, but I don't, I don't see why someone couldn't attend, say if there was a site visit or something like that down the road.
But I don't know, if you have more than the majority, then you can't do it, unless you publish.
Yeah, that's true.
You can, you can publish it and do it.
If you have the majority and you go on a site visit, you have to take the recording secretary and you have to have a public...
10 minutes and everything.
Right.
So we'll leave it at that, those four, if there are other members that, when the time comes, if there's a site visit that comes up, or, or whenever you call for a meeting, we'll deal with it at that time.
Check with legal counsel.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll leave that to the chair.
And I'll let Ms. Tierney know that these are the, this is the committee, because she's the one that's going to be doing it with you.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other outstanding matters pertaining to old business? Hearing none, new business?
Yes, hold on.
Oh, yes. Committeeman O'Hair.
The outstanding for previous meetings, the Athletic Hall of Fame, et cetera, et cetera, this, this has been going on for like five years, and I wonder if there's any more that is coming out of. I know that it may go into the, uh...
The alumni, the...
Yeah, the alumni, but we don't seem to be moving. That's my point, and that goes back a long way, you know?
Right.
So does anybody, does anybody have something on that, or is that just going to be thrown in the?
At the foundation meeting, they, we just had a foundation meeting, December 5th, they tabled it.
Who's "they"?
To the, the foundation.
Well...
They were invited to the foundation meeting. They did a reorg of the, the committee, the board, Mr. Lindsay is no longer the chairman, it's now Mr. Casson, and that will be discussed after, after the holidays. They will have a meeting and they will discuss fundraising.
Yeah.
Such as the Hall of Fame, the...
I'll make sure, Mr.?
Resurrecting, the superintendent's dinner, and those types of things.
This, this project moves back like 20 years, and it's, if we, if we list this in our books, you'll see it's gone, and gone, and gone, because we've never done, never, never followed through with what we were trying to do. But this is good news to hear.
I'll make sure Mr. Casson gets, gets a hold of it, Judge.
It's fine with me.
Okay. Mr. Moran?
Yeah, new business, I'd like to announce...
We're still on old business.
I thought we were just, why, you called on me because I had some new business.
New business, go ahead.
Okay, well, I gotta wake back up again now, but let's say that the naming criteria committee will be trying to get its first meeting in January 30th of 2020. We've been, you know, trying to get the ball rolling on that. So we will be meeting in January.
Where will you be meeting?
We'll be meeting here. And it'll be, whoever, our secretary at the time, will be getting in touch with the, the members to see what we can set up, or it may not be precisely the 30th, it may be on or around that time, you know, if, if they can come in the, in the day, or afternoon, or evening, or whatever's going to be best, so that we can at least get the ball rolling there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Neil, yes, Mr. Bahu?
Mr. Moran, may I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
How many school committee members are on that committee?
I have a list of the...
Three.
Many, and I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
I know I happen to be the chair of that.
You, I believe, Mr. Shin and Mr. Tassius.
Yeah, I do think that, yeah, right, right.
Okay.
And you know, whoever can attend, you know, we'll work things out.
Another thing I wanted to just say on the new business was, and I don't know who put this together, but I want to applaud their efforts. This is, was in the Lowell Sun on a couple of occasions, a full-page ad for the 2020 eighth-grade open house coming up, Wednesday, January 8th. Outstanding.
A good, nice job.
Outstanding. So, Mr. Superintendent, maybe first off, you could tell me who put that together, and then if you wanted to ad lib anything else. I just thought it was a good outlay, a full-page ad, great, good job, I just wanted to bring it in.
A lot of work by a lot of individuals under the direction of Ms. Martinez, the director of enrollment. Thank you.
Well, would you, Ms. Davis, give Ms. Martini, Martinez regards and a good job?
You've got the floor, Mr. Chairman, feel free.
I'd do that if she was here. I'd do it myself, too, next time I, I see her.
No, it's an awesome job.
Yeah.
She does great work.
And obviously, we're all invited, I know I'm going to, I will be here, I've already marked it on my calendar. I think that's a good night to speak with residents from the area that are potentially going to be here, and we can expound on what we've done here.
Almost brag.
You have to ask. You have to ask them.
Mr. Getchia, on the committeemen motions?
I just, I just want to make sure we have a policy going in place forward, so it doesn't happen again. On the MCAS scores, I just want to make sure you and I had to talk, so just want to make sure we have...
Sure, so just to address...
Could I just read the motion?
Sorry, sorry.
Motion reads by Mr. Getchia to have Greater Lowell ask the state to recalculate the MCAS scores with Greater Lowell providing the proper data.
So, so just to clarify, the MCAS scores are part of the accountability rating, and the data that, there was an error in the advanced coursework data, and that since then has been corrected, reported to the state on Thursday, December 12th, I think that was last Thursday. So moving forward, that will reflect in our data and be reflected in the accountability report for the 2020 school year.
And we have a policy in place so it doesn't happen again?
Yes, we do.
So Chairman, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Committeeman Getchia would like to withdraw the motion, he's satisfied with the response.
Thank you.
Report of subcommittees? No? We accept the motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Seconded by?
Mr. Giggie.
Mr. Giggie.
Mr. Shin?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchia?
Yes.
Mr. Tassius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?